Good for them either.
Kerrville City Council is in session. I have the invocation and pledge. Councilman Barudy, you'll please stand.
Dear Lord, thank you, thank you for bringing us all here together again in this wonderful city of Kerrville. Thank you for the many blessings you bring to our lives, our families, our friends, our non-friends, all of them, blessings all. Just as you directed Elijah to go to the Brook Charith, where you'd feed him and give him drink, help us to understand where you have Kerrville to be directed to for our Brook Charith, so that we can reap the rewards of your many blessings as a city as a whole. In Jesus's name, amen.
Come now to the announcements of community interest.
And good evening to everybody. I think this is the first time in quite a while that we haven't had a basketball team. Okay, I've got a couple of announcements if I can get them up on the screen there. First one, we, the city of Kerrville, released its new My Government Online Permitting and Inspection Software yesterday, I believe. This new software is designed to enhance the application, submittal, plan review, and inspection experience for contractors and residents through convenient online services. Contractors and residents will now have the ability to, among other things, apply online for building permits and trade permits, pay permit fees online, track application process up to permit issuance, and a number of other items up through when an inspection is actually completed. This software can be accessed through the city's website, and I believe we've already had some people start using it since yesterday, haven't they?
Yes.
So that's great. Check it out if you want to go online and see what it's all about.
Are we allowed to ask a question here? Is, for the technically challenged, do they have to go through this, or is the paper format still usable?
They'll have to go through the online. We do have a kiosk in our office that we can assist customers to go through that process. Okay. Any other questions on that? All right, I think we went over this two weeks ago, but just remind everybody, if you've got any old drugs that you want to get rid of, it's this Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kerrville Police Department. And we have a pretty good turnout on that every year, don't we? Okay.
I have a question. I'm going to be out of town this weekend. Is there someplace I could bring them, um, on Thursday?
You can bring them to the police department on Thursday and just come down to the front desk.
On Thursday?
Okay, we have another big event coming up, May the 10th. And this will be the second annual Guns and Hoses Flight Football Game. I don't know how many of y'all got to go to this last year, but it was a lot of fun. It pits the police department against the fire department. Like I said, that will be Friday, May the 10th, at Antler Stadium. It's a free event, begins with a pre-game celebration at 5:30, and the game itself actually starts at 7:30. Like I said, it's free, but we asked for a $5 entry donation, and that will be donated to the Christian Women's Job Corps. I think Chief Knight's police department won last year's game, so I think Chief Smith, who's also here, his fire department will be looking for a little redemption this year. So y'all check that out if you're up on it. And last but not least, early voting began yesterday. We encourage everybody to go to the polls, go to Callas Center and cast your vote. Early voting continues through April 30th. Election Day is actually Saturday, May the 4th. And so I will conclude by saying, may the 4th be with you.
No, that's bad.
Can we make a motion not to have that again?
Yeah, yeah. I have an announcement about community interest. Today was the 12th Annual Christian Women's Job Corps Luncheon and Style Show. The style show features the women who are in Christian Women's Job Corps, and some of their children. And it is a great occasion, and there are over 500 people there at the End of the Hills Conference Center. And that is a tremendous organization, Christian Women's Job Corps, and it'll benefit this football game coming up, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, good, good. Okay. Anyone else?
I have one. Since I love to play in fundraisers, especially if they're golf tournaments, the Doyle Community Center is raising funds, and they're hosting a golf tournament May 13th at the Shriners. And I have a team ready to go, but if you're interested in joining, there's plenty of room for teams of four. And it's a very, it's a really good rate. It's $95 a person. Usually that's way over $100. So it's for a good cause, so if you're interested in getting a team up, let me know.
All right, okay. We'll come now to the visitors, citizens forum. Any citizen with visits not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The city council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place it on a future agenda. The number of speakers is limited to the first 10, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. We have some persons for the citizens.
We have nine speakers signed up.
All right.
John Brown.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
A couple of weeks ago on Friday, I put out my recycling bin, and I noticed about 4:30 that it hadn't been picked up, so I called the public services and got voicemail. Saturday morning, I called them back, got voicemail, and they said they would return the call. They did return the call, and they said the reason it wasn't picked up is because it was contaminated. I said, "I'm just a homeowner. I don't know what you're talking about." So that's all I can tell you, is contaminated. Monday morning, I come down here, and the first person I talked to is Crystal Warris, and she patiently listens to me whine and complain. She sits back for a second and says, "Wait just a second." Gets on the phone, calls somebody, and a few minutes later, Sarah Garcia came down. She patiently listens to me whine and complain, and said, "Hang on just a minute." She left, a few minutes later, she came back, and she has gotten in touch with the public services, and they have provided a picture of the offending item. Okay. Monday morning, I get a call from an employee who only identified himself as JP. He said, "I'll be there in 10 minutes to pick it up." I said, "I'll have it out in two." Well, I heard him right, and went out and talked to him. And he took the bin off and brought it back later. And the point of this is that here are three city of Kerrville employees who identified a problem, found a solution, and put it into action and resolved the problem, and they all need a pat on the back. And I hope somebody can identify JP, but Sarah Garcia and Crystal Warris. Now, the identifying the culprit, you'll figure this. The contaminated item was about a four-and-a-half-foot-long mop handle, made out of aluminum, but had a plastic gripper. Well, I had looked at it, and I said, "Well, the aluminum's recyclable, the plastic's recyclable, so this can go in there." Well, JP told me that, yeah, aluminum's recyclable, plastic's recyclable, but when the plastic is attached to the aluminum, it becomes non-recyclable or contaminated in the eyes of republic services. So go figure that.
Put it on my need-to-know list.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warris.
You bet.
Thank you.
Eva, the last name B U H I D A R?
Hello, my name is Eva Buhyder, and I reside at 515 Wingfoot Lane. I have been following the editorials in the paper, and I have come to the conclusion that there are many people who have judged George Barudy without ever having met him. Let me tell you that I have sat down with George several times, and this is what I know about him. He works hard, he loves his family, he is a man of character, integrity, and faith. He is a man of courage, determination, and heart. He is not afraid to ask the hard questions. He is not a yes-man. He cares deeply about Kerrville because his family and friends live here, and he cares about the citizens he represents. As Abraham Lincoln said, "Character is like a tree and reputation like a shadow. The shadow is what we think of it. The tree is the real thing." When you have a chance to speak with George, you will see the tree and not the shadow. I challenge anyone who has cast negative words and accusations against George to create the shadow, to sit down with him and get to know the tree. He is the real deal. Think about it. He is not concerned with being liked, he is not concerned with being popular, he is not concerned with his reputation. Do you know why? Because he believes in the principle of doing the right thing when cronyism and hidden agendas lurk in our city government. He questions when the waters are murky because he represents us, the people, and he believes in us, the people, understanding the issues when others use smoke and mirrors to deceive and confuse the citizens. So shame on anyone who has said negative things about George without ever having spoken to him. Shame on anyone who has done so to further their own agenda, and shame on all who accept this behavior. Easter is behind us now, but ask yourself, what would Jesus say? Let me turn your attention now to the increase in property taxes. There are several of us in the room who have noted our property tax increases. My husband and I own three properties. One where my parents live, and one where my stepdaughter lives. I talked today to a gentleman at the Kirk County Appraisal District who has 10 parking spaces next to a Dry Creek bed. His land was assessed previously at $35,000. Today, he was in to appeal the newest assessment, because now it is being assessed at $150,000. I spoke to another gentleman today who said he did a cursory check on homeowners in Comanche Trace. All the homes he was able to check had no change in their property taxes, and as a matter of fact, several of them had decreases. I want an accountability by the city to explain how these assessments are being conducted and why there is such a disparity across the board. The bottom line up front is, where is the city budget? Is the city budget driving these dramatic appraisal increases? If so, why? Thank you.
Linda Bullard?
I'm going to follow on that. My name is Linda Bullard, 916 Lazy Lane. And if you saw me raise my sign there, I just got my appraisal notice, and Kirkad raised its appraisal of 916 Lazy Lane by 68% in the last five years. However, if we look just a bit before that, to the time I bought my house, which was nine years ago, in that time, Kerrville, Kirkad raised the appraisal on my lot by 506%. When I bought it, the lot was appraised at $17,000, little over $17,000. And today, just nine years later, the lot is valued at $87,500. This will place a value of approximately $4.15 per square foot on the average lot in my neighborhood, and this is way out of line with contiguous neighborhoods around us, where the values range from $0.34 a square foot to the highest at $2.73 a square foot. One of my neighbors went down to Kirkad to protest the increase and was told that the values in contiguous neighborhoods don't count, don't matter, because it's the mystique of Methodist encampment, which is the reason. And it's true, we've just been awarded a historical marker by the Texas Historical Commission. But should we, who applied for the marker and are maintaining this very special historical heritage for Kerrville, should we be charged extra to do that? I also have a two-bedroom house I rent, and the assessment has gone up for it too. I charge a very reasonable rent for a two-bedroom house, independent house, $750 a month, which makes it, I think, affordable housing. I've had the same tenant for five years, and she is part of what we've started calling the workforce, employed in one of the local hospital systems. I've never raised her rent a penny in all the time she's been there and did not want to, but I'm afraid I'm going to have to now. And I give this example only to point out that this kind of a hike in property taxes not only affects homeowners, it also adversely affects renters, and does so at a time when city council is touting its commitment to affording affordable housing for the workforce. Does that only refer to future housing? Anyway, I think this is getting out of hand now, and I'd like to understand why. The best explanation I've heard so far came from Mario Garcia, who said, "Today's debt is tomorrow's taxes," from which it follows that yesterday's debt is today's taxes. I might not feel so resentful if I thought that we were getting good value for our sacrifice, but I no longer feel this way. I think we're way over the line of fiscal responsibility for our community. Are we on the road to becoming like San Antonio or Austin, where local people are going to be priced out of their own houses because of appraisals that lead to taxes they can't pay? Their property then sold to wealthier buyers from outside our area? Pricing out our own children who'd like to come back and raise their families here after schooling or travels? So I would like for city council to hold a public hearing on this matter of property appraisal and its relationship to our property taxes and our city debt. As a first step, I'd like for one of you to put this on the agenda of the next council meeting. I'm standing up here to tell you that we need relief, and not as individuals going down to protest our cases at Kirkad, but as a class, the class of property owners and renters in Kerrville whose interests are represented by you. Thank you.
Susan Denninger?
Susan Denninger, 103 Turnberry Circle. Our property went up 33%, .5%, and I think our neighbor said theirs went up 17% right next door. What is going on in Kerrville? Have you received your tax appraisals? What's the huge increases about? We can't afford this kind of crease along with water, sewer, and electricity? We have a school to pay for. Is this what we can expect to continue? I agree with George Barudy and Mario Garcia that we need voter approval on any future big-ticket projects that this city considers. We have a reuse pond that we were told would bring drinkable water, but it does take care of some tourist kinds of things and quality of life for some private golf courses and for the DBATs, fields. We have some DBAT fields, which local kids really can't use unless they belong to teams and come in. It brings in tourist money, I guess, and it contributes to a certain quality of life. The River Trail is very nice, and we all appreciate that. The reused pond, we are, the professionals made some mistakes on that, and we're paying another $285,900 to correct that as a start. This city needs to stop and think about, put a break on tourist and quality of life spending. Your 2050 community plan lists infrastructure first, I believe, then quality of life, then the river for use for people around here, then housing, touristing is last. And we have it upside down, and I just would like it, it's been talked a lot about, this 2050 plan. And I looked it up, and our infrastructure is in bad shape here. And I know we've put lights in the garage across the way here, which they needed, but I'm not sure we need all the decorations on the side. That's another $125,000, I believe is budgeted for that. Who's that going to benefit? And the Water Street repairs were put on that project also, but there's nothing about what's being done by them. We're getting $6,000 for slurries. Okay, we need emphasis on infrastructure jobs, affordable housing. There have been three different projects for affordable housing that have fallen through here in the last two years for reasons that I think are pretty questionable and need to be brought up and talked about some more. Some attention and some focus needs to be on those projects. Please, on behalf of your citizens, write a strong resolution to the 86th legislator recommending and approving a 3.5% cap on property appraisal taxes. We have a city council person, I understand, who sits on our curse Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Do you folks ever talk with her about what you expect her to do as an oversight person on that board? You really need to, because we don't need head nodders on there. We need people who are looking up the information and doing their due diligence on our behalf. I understand our tax rates haven't gone up, but if our property appraisals continue to go up 33, 50, 100%, you don't need to raise your tax rates. I just ask you, please, consider your 2050 plan and projects. Thank you.
Robert White?
I'll pass.
Corey Trubs?
Good evening, Corey Trubs, 1684 Chumpton Highway. I'm going to give us a break from the tax issue for a minute and go back to something that, sure, some aren't going to want to rehash. Anyway, I'm here tonight to continue a conversation that's been lost over the last few weeks regarding what was called selective enforcement, in more particular, the Chamber of Commerce's new sign. As you know, I've been here several times with questions about the permitting of the sign that was done for the Chamber of Commerce. On March 4th, I sent a lengthy letter to all of council, including Mr. Mayor, asking questions of how this was done. This prompted an investigation by Mr. Garcia that resulted in this here 25-page report, giving me what was considered to be answers to my questions on how this was done. I was not, and I'm still not satisfied with the answers I have been given due to so many inconsistencies inside of this report that just don't add up. The next time this issue was brought up was at a city council workshop meeting, not just a regular city council meeting, workshop meeting, where the public is not allowed to speak. I was silenced at that meeting. After that meeting, I was requested a meeting with Mr. Mayor. Few days later, Mr. Mayor, Matt Blackburn, and Ms. Seegerman were kind enough to meet me at my office and let me explain the questions and inconsistencies I had in this report that was given to me. A few days went by, didn't hear any response. Finally, Ms. Seegerman, you responded to me, that you felt this report was satisfactory. Mr. Mayor, your response, I'm going to read back to you. Says, "Corey, don't give up on me. We promised you we would get some independent eyes on the issues related to the chamber sign. I am still committed to doing that. It is just proving hard to find the right two persons who can do it well and impartially, but I am still trying and hope to get back with you soon." Since then, I have not heard anything, but would like to know, is this something we're still pursuing? Or is this going to get washed under a rug like other things we've seen in the past? In the report I was given, in the response to my question, it states that the electrical permit for this sign was in fact backdated and that it was done deliberately. Not only was it done, this council knows who did it. My question is, a staff member deliberately backdating a legal document is okay? We accept the answer. I don't remember as to why this was done. I don't find that as an acceptable answer, and I don't think anybody else involved with this city should. I was also told that if you don't have the electrical license to pull the sign permit, you must have an electrician come pull a separate line electrical permit. Over the last couple of weeks, I sent out a public information request and requested every sign permit, electrical permit, ever sent in since January 1st, 2016. Few days later, it's acceptable because I know how much work that was. I paid $150 to get these reports given to me. They started trickling in this morning. I haven't had a chance to go through all of them yet. I haven't made it through probably 10% of them yet. But the small bit I had 20 minutes to go through today, I have already found within the last three weeks, since that chamber sign was done, two sign permits that are electrical, given to contractors that do not have the electrical licensing to do it, nor was a separate electrical permit pulled by a licensed electrician to do the signs as well. How do we explain this, and is there going to ever be anything done with this? Or are we just waiting for this sign code to be adopted where we can wash it under a rug again? Those are my questions I'd like to have answered one day.
Harvey Brinkman?
Harvey Brinkman, 306 River Hill. I'm at one of the circles in River Hill. I don't have anything to complain about. I came to, I did have one of my buildings go up 95% on taxes, but we'll fight that game in a different place. City council is one of those, but I consider the KISD as another, because they also get some of those funds, I think. But I'm here to compliment, I thank Mr. Vogel, and just to thank him for a stop sign at Water Street and G Street. And I was told he was involved in that, and that's one of the best stop signs in Kirk County. Thank you, thank you. It really, really.
Don't forget, it's where the Kerrville Farmers Market is too, so thank you for the assistance.
Bruce Stricki?
Well, I came with good news. And I'm going to start with the tax thing, and I'll tell you, we're all scrambling in the business. We got data late this afternoon from the Central Appraisal District. We haven't had a chance to go through it. I have found at least one property in Comanche Trace that went up nearly 30% this year. Most of the properties in Comanche Trace went up significantly, well, significantly, went up a lesser amount last year and some the year before that. And one of the things that I've noticed about KCAD is that they seem to do clumps. In Lesby County, I see regular appraisals come in a little higher almost every year, if not every year, and they're in small bumps. I can point out several properties throughout the county that haven't been adjusted in 10 years but had a huge jump this year, and several of them I got calls about over the weekend, and we're, again, we're looking at that. I can also tell you that I'm hearing about this all over the state. Then I've had brokers that I work with on projects throughout the state that have called and asked me what's going on down here, and I'm asking what's going on down there. I don't have any data. I just got the dump from KCAD this afternoon, so I haven't looked at anything. I can't comment beyond that. A lot of us are upset. I can say this. Somebody sent this to me. In Kirk County, in Kirk County, 148 parcels increased 1,000%. In Kirk County, there were 1,603 parcels that at least doubled this year. And the properties that doubled in value increased the Kirk County amount by half of the total increase in assessments. There were about half a billion dollars in assessments went up this year across the county. I don't have the city data. I haven't had a chance to look at it. But this is a problem. It's a problem across the state. It's a problem in the county, and we do need to look at the appraisal district and talk with them. Now, some good news. I got two minutes to bring you some good news. Today, I got an email on the CUTS program, Kerrville Urban Trail System. It's a private, mostly private, I think the city gave a small donation to CUTS, but most of the money came from the private sector to design an idea of an urban trail system on South Clay. And the idea is to expand that, once we get it on South Clay into other parts of the city, to create more connectivity. People who know me see me walking around town and walking to lunch or walking to meetings, and I do that frequently. And we want to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment in Kerrville, and this private project, and again, I think the city gave $1,000.
No, they gave half of that initial 26.
I thank you for.
They also had a fundraiser that raised $17,000 too.
Brinkman gave $1,000. I'm glad the city gave 10.
13.
13.
Thank you.
Thank you again, George. I'm glad the city gave half. This is an idea that's good for our health, it's good for our city, it's good for our vibrancy, it's good for stores and restaurants and. vibrancy, it's good for stores and restaurants and the kind of place that we all moved here to be in a small town where we could walk and meet friends and say hi to people that we don't know and have it be a friendly environment, which is really great. And so I'm excited about where Kerrville's going. There are always bumps along the road, but you guys are doing a great job, and I just wanna encourage you all to keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Field Morgan.
In Kerrville, I'm Bill Martin, seventeen forty-four Glen Road. In the quest we have had for bringing in new businesses and so forth, I rented this stump the other day, and it was brought to me because I'm on planning and zoning commission. Uh, I understand that the city is paying something like ninety thousand dollars for water and sewer across the river, going to McDonald properties and so forth. And this fellow was wanting to, to enlarge his business out on Junction Highway, and he's been on Septic, and he wants to go on a sewer. And he's gonna have some new building and new construction, and he quotes the city about getting sewer from one side of the highway to the other. They wanted sixty-seven thousand dollars to do that. Where is the justice in that? When he's gave ninety-seven thousand across the river, somebody else wants to open up an area for development, then he got tagged for sixty-seven thousand dollars. He's not gonna do it. So we've lost the potential for business expansion out there. I'd like to know what's going on with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
That's the end of the speakers. That's the end of the speakers.
Okay. All right. We've come to, uh, a good part of this, uh, business session, and that is recognizing the good, hard work of some folks. So with those who are involved in the tourism effort who are here tonight, if you would come to, or, uh, the front. So anyone who knows Kerrville economy knows that tourism is very important to us. And so tonight, we're going to present this proclamation to Charlie McElveyn, Director of the Convention and Visitor Bureau, as soon as I get my glasses. Whereas National Travel and Tourism Week twenty nineteen, sixty-six, thirty-sixth, annual celebration of the contributions and accomplishments of the travel industry in the United States, and is an annual tradition that was established by congressional resolution in nineteen eighty-three and first celebrated in nineteen eighty-four with President Ronald Reagan's signature. And whereas travel has a positive impact on Kerrville's economic prosperity in excess of a hundred and ten million dollars annually, as it improves visitors' well-being as they visit Kerrville and experience the product mix, which enhances the quality of life for residents of Kerrville. And whereas the National Travel and Tourism Week's twenty nineteen theme is "Travel Matters", is a recognition of the innumerable ways in which travel enriches lives and strengthens the Kerrville community through support of the Hill Country's arts, entertainment, educational, sports, and recreational programs. And whereas the Kerrville Convention and Visitor Bureau advertising campaign consisting of print media, television, and social media, which promotes Kerrville as a top Texas destination and has a positive impact in visitor activity in Kerrville, and whereas Kerrville is a well-respected leisure and meeting destination with a vibrant product mix with additional product components planned in the future, and whereas travel to Kerrville provides economic benefits for the city and its citizens, as visitors spend, spend over sixty million dollars annually in Kerrville by creating in excess of one thousand twenty jobs and generating in excess of two million dollars in local sales tax revenue paid by out-of-town guests, thereby decreasing residents' tax burden required to cover services enjoyed by all. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim May five through eleven, twenty nineteen, is Travel and Tourism Week in Kerrville, Texas, and urge the citizens of Kerrville to join me as we welcome visitors to our community, recognize the importance and the value of the tourism industry, and further encourage citizens of Kerrville to visit area attractions and become more familiar with the Kerrville product mix. Senator John Blackburn, may you. Thank you, Mayor.
Charlie really works hard at that and has a good crew.
Uh, we're gonna move to the consent agenda, and, uh, these will be considered as a unit unless somebody pulls one. And I'm going to pull four A. Okay?
You want a motion for four B?
Um, no, let's, yeah, yeah, go to four B, and then we'll come back to four A.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the minutes four B under the consent agenda. I'll second.
All right. All in favor of that recommendation, motion, if you'd let it be, number of the raised hand. Okay. Now, my, my, uh, requested correction is, uh, not big, but in a way it is. On three C, when we presented the proclamation, it says to CASA, we just need to add Hill Country Crisis Council, um, Child Protective Services, and the Child Services Board. And the reason I say that is, it is such a significant collaboration on the issue of child abuse, and we have their individual names listed here, but I would like for us to add the names of the organizations. And I'll make that motion.
Well, I'd, I'd like to add a couple of corrections as well. So in five C of that same minutes, it was on page three of the minutes. The inclusion of, I guess, uh, it says, Mayor Blackburn called for a motion, no motion was presented. Truly, there was no motion, there was no agenda item with a motion, so rather than put all that preliminary, just say no action taken, because that's really what happened. No motion was provided. So, that's, that's five C. And then six A, um, the, this is more of a clarification, but it starts, it starts off by saying the citizen did not register to speak in advance, but registered to speak after. They really did register to speak in advance of speaking, so I would just suggest we say the citizen registered to speak after everything else that was written there. Just clarification of what really.
Okay. Uh, we might, we might come back to six A. I, I think that needs to stand, but on, uh, what you indicated on five C, just no action taken, uh, I think that's, I think that's good. Uh, so, I'm, again, I'll make the motion that we, uh...
Well, why, why would you let the other one stand? They, they did actually fill their form out before trying to speak.
Yes, but we had already ended the item, and we had a whole series of speakers.
Right, so that part that says, registered to speak in advance, that's still, they, they actually did register to speak in advance, just take that part out.
But isn't in advance, advance of meeting?
It wasn't in advance, it was in the midst of the discussion.
It's not in advance of the item, it's in advance of the actual meeting. Like, we just had the nine speakers.
Add in, in advance of the item, because it was in advance of speaking, which is what the rule asks for.
Okay, then add, in advance of A.
That, that request came in the midst of discussion, and we'd had a number of speakers, and that's fine.
Leave it in, that's okay.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, the two changes requested adding the, uh, the names of the organization involved in the proclamation three C, and then, uh... Then on five C, no action taken, listed that way. All right, I make a motion that we adopt that.
I'll second.
Okay, good, motion second. All in favor? If you'd let it be, number of the raised hand. Okay. Uh, as we move into the, uh, we move into the public hearings, uh, let me remind you in terms of session input, uh, for generally, you need to sign up in advance to speak to an agenda item. For a public hearing, you don't have to. Um, you will be limited to four minutes, and citizens can only speak once on an agenda item, uh, and give us the name and address when you, uh, when you come up, and, uh, and address the council. So, at six forty, we go into a public hearing for five A.
Public hearing regarding an ordinance for the City of Kerrville to annex into its incorporated limits with a zoning classification of public and institutional district, P.I., a portion of an approximately thirty-five point zero five acre tract of land out of the South Wallace Survey number one fourteen, abstract number three forty-eight, and South Wallace Survey number one thirteen, abstract number three forty-seven. Said portion of the tract located within Kerr County, Texas, and the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Kerrville, Texas, consisting of the property generally located adjacent to State Highway Loop five thirty-four. The portion of the tract that is located within the City of Kerrville is currently zoned both E twenty-five and residential cluster, R.C. zoning districts. Said zoning, which is proposed to be amended to public and institutional district, P.I., file number twenty nineteen dash zero zero seven.
All right, Mr. Paxton.
This is an annexation request by Kerrville Independent School District. Uh, it's the second public hearing as required by state statute under chapter forty-three Local Government Code. The property is within the Kerrville Catalyst twenty fifty area, surrounding Tybee High School along Loop five thirty-four. The Planning Commission did recommend the property to be at, for annexation with the public and institutional district zoning. And again, this is the second public hearing. Next public hearing will be May fourteenth with the first ordinance reading, and the second ordinance reading will be May twenty-eighth. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
One question I have is, and this is raised before, when, when will the traffic study be completed?
We've done, I'll address that. We've done a partial, uh, preliminary traffic analysis, impact analysis already, and they're in the process of, uh, connecting the text dot on some component to that, uh, before the, uh, final analysis will be complete later this spring.
You know, my, my concern is, and I hear it from citizens, that if you, if you've got the high school across the loop, and you've got the middle school, you've got Olympic Drive coming through, and then you've got your normal traffic on the loop, are we gonna have such a bottleneck that the loop won't serve the purpose that we needed to serve, which is traffic flow across, across town in, in that way? And so, you know, I'm, I'm obviously not against this, but I just wanna see a traffic study and, and complete it.
And, and can we add that my concern isn't as much at the bottleneck at the loop? The overflow that's going to happen, sending all that traffic back through those neighborhoods, which is already a kinda overused, singing winds deer trail gets used heavily. If the, if Olympic Drive, if I'm coming out, just have the traffic study, look at the flow going that direction as well, is, I guess, all I'm saying.
I was curious, what would determine that the volume is over the amount we can handle? In other words, is there a, um, a formula that's used that says, whoops, this is gonna be a lot more than we anticipated, or?
Right, so we know what the traffic generators are. Um, some of those are mitigated by the nature of the timing of the school zones, uh, and when school starts and stops. Uh, so it's something that KISD is very cognizant of, is they'll be looking to possibly amend those as they, uh, go into the, the school year, once those open. Uh, but in addition to that, there's various features that they'll have to mitigate potentially. Uh, it could be acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, the number of lanes, uh, you know, that'd be, you know, fully analyzed within, uh, the analysis.
All right, so, man, this is coming back to us, I know, but, um, is there, uh... Uh, so, I need to see the completed traffic study before I vote for it again. And so, we'll be able to do that?
I'm not sure of the timing of that.
You're dependent on text dot, but can you push them?
Well, recall again, KISD will have to mitigate whatever elements within the traffic impact analysis that's out there. This is, again, annexation, um, so it's, it's not necessarily related to the annexation per se, but, um, certainly, we will, uh, continue to push for the text dot review piece. We have already received the preliminary analysis, uh, from, uh, CEC, which has begun some work with KISD already, um, and they are, they are not indicating any major, uh, roadblocks, so to speak, uh, from what they are seeing within the traffic generators.
Did the preliminary analysis look at going up, the traffic overflow is gonna go up Olympic Drive and into those neighborhoods?
Yes, sir, it's looking at the entirety of both Olympic as well as Loop, Singing Winds and, uh, Loop five thirty-four. Yes, sir.
So this is giving them the very first step. This is permitting the annexation, and then all of these other things will fall into place as we move down the road.
That's correct.
But since the mayor's asked the question, do we have a ballpark on timing of when that, I mean, I know it's not tied to this, it's not gonna hold up this vote or whatever we're doing here, but do we have a, a estimate on when the time, on a traffic study will be complete?
Well, again, it's per text dot review, uh, but I would suspect it would be within the next six to eight weeks.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any further questions on this? Yes, Mr. Dager.
Yeah, one question, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Uh, sorry.
I got one question.
You got a question?
It's gonna be for pretty much five A, six A, and six B, but, um, will the changing of the zoning kind of meet what we're, we're doing with this new zoning code, or the new zoning district we're creating? Is anything gonna change between now and then?
It's gonna depend on each of those. For the public and institutional, it'd be very minimal changes. That is, that we are keeping that district in the new zoning code, um, so that schools will be allowed, and other public and institutional uses would be allowed.
Okay, Ms. Dager. Sorry, did, did you sign up to speak on this?
Oh, I thought this was a public hearing, you didn't have to.
You're, I'm sorry, you're correct, you're correct. You'll come to the lecture.
I have noticed that there are several little, uh, homes behind the high school and in that area, and then there is that business across the street from the high school. Are all of those going to be removed for this project? And are they notified at this time? I mean, I would think that would be land that's part of the annexation and everything, and I'm just wondering how that's handled.
Uh, Mr. Paxton.
I'm not sure which property you're referring to.
There are several little mobile homes there behind the school.
Across the street.
Yeah. And that's not part of the annexation?
East side of five thirty-four, yeah.
The annexation is...
On the west side.
Yeah, it's already annexed, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, you'll come up here, please.
I'm Stephanie Stewart, I live at twenty-two oh five San Jacinto Drive. I am part of the neighborhood that will be affected from Olympic, and I am deeply concerned. I mean, I'm all for the schools being upgraded, everything, but I'm concerned about the flow of traffic. Already, I know they've expanded Singing Wind, and me getting from San Jacinto, turning right down to Singing Wind, I already have to wait about five minutes because it's a cluster mess of people coming, I guess, westbound, and they have their signal light on, and I don't know if they're turning right onto Olympic, or they're turning into Tom Daniels. And then you have the people coming, you know, eastbound, and it's just a big mess there. So there needs to be a light, or at least think of a light that's there. And then on top of that, around two o'clock, when Tom Daniels lets out, there's already cars that are lining up all along Olympic, all the way up, and they even block off San Jacinto Drive. I mean, we're a quiet little road that it's just us and the Alamo that's there, and I've kind of enjoyed not having a traffic flow, but obviously, that's coming, and I can't prevent that. Please keep that in mind, and if you're gonna be allowing... Please keep that in mind, and if you're gonna be allowing Olympic to come through all the way from Tybee, I want huge speed bumps that are gonna make you come down to one mile per hour, so they can kinda detour the high school kids of like, you know what, I'm not gonna speed through there. And, um, I know I signed up, I think, for the seven, um, A, B, or C, but I had saw on the little map of, of little blue arrows, and I'm assuming that's the flow of traffic. I was kinda concerned, uh, I saw at the corner of San Jacinto, on the north side of it, there was a flow that comes down, 'cause I live somewhat on the corner of Olympic and San Jacinto. And my kids, they like to play, and there's other kids that like to play, and we don't have to worry about it. But I'm concerned now that there's gonna be, it's gonna be like the loop, and they're not gonna get to play outside anymore. So anyhow, that's my concern.
I don't blame you, I would be concerned too.
And I think you have, you have heard, uh, two councilpersons, uh, me and Mr. Barudy, say that, that we're concerned about that, and the, the traffic into the area and so forth, and, and trust that the traffic study will help us anticipate.
And we've talked about a light at that intersection before.
Yeah, yeah, there has been talk about a light at that intersection. Okay. All right, all in favor of five A?
You don't take a vote, Mayor?
Yeah, that's right.
But I need you to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm gonna close the public hearing, then move to, and that is six fifty-one, six A. Uh, and if you will read that for us.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen zero seven, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for an approximate four point oh nine acres, consisting of two tracts out of the Patrick Fleming survey number six six six, abstract number one forty-five, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas. And more commonly known as the property located at two zero one one Easy Street, by removing the property from the Gateway District and placing it within the twenty-three N zoning district, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. File number twenty nineteen zero zero six.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for approximately four acres on two thousand eleven Easy Street. It is currently zoned Gateway, and they are requesting twenty-three N. Mr. Vogel, as far as your questions with the new zoning code, the code review committee has recommended to go against from the, or move away from the geographical districts, the north, south, east, west, and central districts, to simplify the code to two, or three, or four, commercial districts. Um, so with this area and some of the other recent zone cases, we're working with the consultants to see how those new districts fit some of these new zone cases, to make sure we're not changing, reverting what they just changed to. So same as in this case, and several other recent zone cases. Uh, so this area would be looked at as a commercial zoning district, whether that's C two or C three. Um, we're still working with the consultants on that final zoning map.
Is, is the thought that whatever twenty-three N entails is gonna kinda drop right into one of these new ones? Or is it gonna be a, I mean, easily?
We're going from so many districts, trying to simplify down to just a handful. Um, there's gonna be some overlap and some gaps, uh, but the, the intention is to try and be as consistent as we can.
I wanna say something about, about this, but we're going from like forty-eight zones to seventeen? Okay?
That's correct.
Just, just an observation, we, uh, I'm, I'm for this. We authorized a, uh, project right out there next to this that is warehouse, some offices, and so forth.
Right.
And I also understand the neighbors have not complained about this, right?
That's correct.
Is this being driven by development, or are they just trying to get a different zone for vacant land? I mean, is there something coming? That's what I'm asking.
It's currently utilized as a, um, plumbing contractor, and I believe he's got a potential buyer that's wanting to do a different type of contracting business, but doing some construction that triggered his own change.
Yeah, a couple of comments, Mayor, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Um, my main concern in doing it now is that we changed the zoning, they haven't permitted use, and then we changed it again, and that's not permitted anymore. What? Do we have anything right now we can do to ensure that whatever we permit today continues to be permitted, even after the zoning change, after that whole zoning district changes?
If a use is in place that would not be allowed in the future zoning district, it would be grandfathered, continue to stay. Uh, but that's a big part of the study that we're looking at with our consultants, is to show what existing uses and permitted uses are allowed in the current zoning and the future zoning, to get those to line up as much as possible. Uh, but parcel by parcel, there's no way to guarantee that. We're just trying to look through that code as closely as we can, and make sure we're catching as much of that as possible.
Don't wanna hold this up, but I'm just trying to figure, what's the worst-case scenario? If we do do this tonight, and not wait till the actual whole district's changed, what's, what are we gonna get into?
Just depends on what they're proposing, um, and how that fits with the new zoning district.
So the grandfathered means non-conforming, right? So they would be able to grandfather in exactly as they are, just no changes, right?
That's correct.
I mean, to the, yeah, all right.
So it should be, we should be okay.
If they're grandfathered, and they haven't built what they're wanting to build, and that's not permitted, they can't build it.
Yeah.
In that case, they would have to go back through the zone change process.
I, I do support it, I'm just a little worried about that. I just hope we can work through that.
We've talked with a lot of our customers that come in about that process and the timing that we're in, so that they understand going through a code rewrite. So at the end of the adoption of that code, your zoning will be different than you're requesting now. And trying to give them that timeline, so they can make their best decision as well.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion, if you want, to approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash oh seven.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Didn't there be public speak, any people speak to?
No one signed up.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, if you'd let me know by the raised hand? All right, we are... Oh. Close that public hearing at six fifty-seven, and open the next at six fifty-seven, okay?
Ordinance number twenty nineteen zero eight, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for a portion of a ten point zero six acre tract out of the Thornton F. Hollis survey number one forty-three, abstract number one eighty-one, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as one hundred Concho Drive, by removing the area for, from an R one residential zoning district and placing it within the Guadalupe River zoning district, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savory, savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. File number twenty nineteen zero one nine.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is for one hundred Concho Drive. Uh, property is currently split zoning between Guadalupe River District and R one. Uh, they are requesting the Guadalupe River District, uh, which would make the existing single-family home non-conforming, but does open the property to some light, commercial, and multifamily uses. This is within the Kerrville twenty fifty plan catalyst area number two, along the river corridor and up towards the hospital for the medical center, um, back behind, uh, Thompson Drive, as it continues over to Sidney Baker. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
I'm, I'm curious of why, why this is happening? I mean, what, is this, people in that area requesting a change, we're requesting a change?
Property owner requested the change, um, had the property for sale. Do you wanna speak to that?
Harvey Brinkman, three oh six River Hill. Uh, I can't remember which person before Drew Zoic was going on, Mayor, and that particular gentleman that was running Zoic, uh, to change zoning in Kerrville, uh, said, "Sit back, don't do anything, this will be taken care of." Okay, that was eight years ago, seven years ago? And so, I felt like, well, we, we can't wait. We need to get the zoning moved away from the R one to the G R zoning, which comes right down our driveway, we best we can tell. So we were just trying to make something better. We do hope to see sewer there soon, so we're looking at the future.
Okay, all right.
It's the prettiest piece of property in Kerr County.
For sale, right?
Do you know somebody who's selling it?
Might as well, might as well put the price on it.
Waiting for the zoning change, and then...
Okay.
Th- th- this is, this is actually closing, or is it not? I don't know. Is it closing a gap, or like a hole that was an R one hole, and it's now making it Guadalupe, um, zone, the river zone, kinda lengthening it?
Hold on my map, just one second.
It even goes more commercial as you go further west. You know, toward the treatment, water treatment plant, Mr. Barudy, and, uh, then toward Grand View Plant.
So it's just like extending, doing this is really just making the, the river corridor longer, right?
Yeah, extends the Guadalupe River zoning district further upstream.
Yeah.
That's correct.
As far as traffic on there, we've, you've got several entrances that could be, come off of there. Is that being considered, looked at, with?
That's gonna be under text dot purview, since it is part of their system, not city system.
We did make with text dot way back, and reference to this, and then where Shepherd Rees comes into the property, we were talking down there, talking about potential traffic light there, potentially. But that's, you know, we don't know when and if that'll happen.
Okay, what do you wanna do with, with this one?
I have a few questions, Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, is a river, uh, is floodplain gonna affect this property at all, for its development? Is Concho Drive a city street, or is that just a driveway? Who knows?
This property was purchased from the state of Texas. It was part of the state hospital property. Uh, the administrators of the hospital had lived there through all these different years. When we bought it, they didn't say that was a street, they didn't, we bought it as is, so all those things were really not addressed, Mr. Vogel. And from what I remember, Concho is the, it's the shortest street in Kerrville, maybe, I really don't know, but it goes to that house.
Shortest non-existent street.
So we're really a Thompson Drive property, but we have a Concho Drive address for the, for the residents.
I was just looking at, if it is a street, and you're wanting to realign it to the Shepherd Rees, you might, I don't know what the process would be, but that's something to look into.
Yeah, Mr. Vogel, I'm not a developer, uh, at all. I just met with, uh, different individuals that said that that'd be a good way to make it happen there, is to have an address that were, have it where you have a traffic light right at Shepherd Rees. You know, and Thompson, eventually.
Okay, what's your pleasure on this?
And again, Drew, GR, that's gonna be in the new zoning districts?
GR district will not, uh, but we are looking at an overlay to cover entire river corridor. So depending upon what the base zoning is to dictate the land use, and a zoning overlay to look at the development standards and development guidelines for that river corridor. So to build more consistency along the corridor, as far as how it's developed, and let the district itself dictate what's developing there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty nineteen oh eight on first reading.
Okay, Mr. Ray?
I'll second.
Hey, Trey, hold on just a second. Okay, you second it?
I seconded.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Please let me know by the upraised hand. Okay. Trey, stand up just a minute, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna embarrass this guy. Trey Leighton is a senior at Tybee High School. He is president of the senior class, he's president of National Honor Society, and earlier, uh, this year, he said, "I would like to learn more about government, and what the city council does, and everything else." And it has been a great opportunity to get to know him. And he will represent us this fall as a freshman at Harvard University.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Bring back what you want.
Just ran him off, Mayor.
Embarrassed him. Okay. Seven A.
Okay, um, EA, did you need me to read these all three together?
Yes.
Yeah.
EA would like me to read it all three together, but you have to vote on it three different.
Okay, that's all right, that's all right.
Seven A, project funding agreement between the city of Kerrville, Texas, Economic Improvement Corporation and the city of Kerrville, Texas, for the construction project to extend Olympic Drive and wastewater services within the same area. Seven B, inter-local co-operation agreement between city of Kerrville, Texas, and Kerrville Independent School District, Olympic Drive extension. Seven C, authorized execution of professional services agreement with civil engineering consultants for the design and engineering of the Olympic Drive extension in the amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, we do have a citizen that signed up, she did speak earlier, so I don't know if she's...
I'll tell you what, let's, let's let Mr. Hoppy go, and then if you would like to address this, you can.
All right, man, council, we're gonna take these three items all together, 'cause it's basically the same general topic. Uh, we've heard a little bit about it already. So project summary, again, this was, uh, identified within Kerrville twenty fifty, um, item E point six, essentially supporting access to infrastructure that's necessary, uh, to accommodate the future growth of housing and business, uh, whether that be water, wastewater, power, communication, roads, et cetera. Uh, it was also identified in the recently updated master thoroughfare plan, uh, that was updated through that, uh, Kerrville twenty fifty comprehensive planning process. Uh, the project essentially consists of around twenty-six hundred linear feet, uh, stretching from the terminus of Olympic Drive right now, off of Singing Wind, uh, going further north, northeast, uh, over to, uh, the existing pavement and intersection right there at Tybee High School. Uh, in addition to that, it also provides for, uh, additional sidewalk, uh, extensions along that corridor, uh, as well as various pedestrian crossing enhancements and safety enhancements, uh, throughout that corridor. Uh, and I will say that, uh, in talking with the school district, essentially, we are, uh, we will be creating, uh, in regards to, uh, the, the comments earlier about, uh, speed control, uh, the school zone will essentially be from Singing Wind all the way to Loop five thirty-four. Because of the nature of those three schools along that corridor, between the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, that entire section will, will end up basically being a, a school, uh, safety zone. Uh, again, extension of sewer service main, uh, up from, uh, Loop five thirty-four. There is an existing, uh, water there, I'll show that on the maps in just a minute, and then, of course, uh, the design and engineering, uh, for this, uh, project. And that is, uh, item seven C, which is on your agenda tonight. Um, recall as we go through this, that this is a preliminary, uh, engineered project. This is not final design, this is not final engineering, that's really the next step. What tonight is about, is about solidifying the partnership, uh, with KISD, and solidifying the partnership, the funding agreement, uh, from EIC. So we've got steps further down the process in this. Uh, this is really about moving forward, um, and everybody knowing we're all on the same page in how we're moving forward, both from the funding mechanism, as well as that general partnership piece of it. The overall total estimated cost of the project is about two point, uh, two four million. Um, again, this is a preliminary engineered project, that may go up, that may go down. Ultimately, we won't know until we get bids on that project, and we'll be able to, uh, adjust then, and, and the contracts, uh, allow for that. Uh, the EIC request that was made, uh, at this juncture, uh, was for one million fifty thousand, and that is for, uh, the fifty percent essentially that the city is responsible for. Um, the other fifty percent is responsible from the developer, uh, which is developing that other side of the property, which in this case is KISD. So again, this is an aerial, uh, view, you'll see, uh, Loop five thirty-four there on the far right part of your screen, uh, in Tybee High School. Uh, you'll see, uh, just to the left of that, there's kind of a triangle there that backs up to, uh, Singing Winds Park. That is the, uh, thirty-two acres, uh, that the city of Kerrville owns, uh, that was actually, uh, provided to the city, uh, back in the early two thousand timeframe from Shriners University, and that was at the time in exchange through an inter-local, inter-local cooperation agreement based off of the construction of Main Street, uh, there across the north part of, uh, Shriners University. So, uh, the city now owns this piece of property, it is undeveloped. Uh, it is, um, you know, being looked at, uh, for various development purposes, uh, that the, the coun- this council has looked at, uh, be, be that workforce housing, or other economic development purposes. Uh, in addition to that, on the, the north part of, of that kind of red extension- Uh, in addition to that, on the, the north part of, of that kind of red extension where the, the existing right of way exists, uh, is the thirty-five acres that has been, uh, in the process of being annexed, uh, into the city limits. That is the new middle school, proposed to be the new middle school site. Uh, it has frontage along Loop five thirty-four as well as what will be, uh, Olympic Drive. Uh, what you can't really see just to the left of that is the large parcel, about two hundred additional acres that is owned by Shriner University. And that is undeveloped property that is being actively marketed, uh, from the university. It's part of their endowment, uh, and, uh, they are looking to, uh, basically capitalize that endowment, uh, by selling those parcels off for economic development purposes. So, uh, as we took this through the E I C process, uh, they agreed that, you know, this is a corridor that, um, is, as identified in Kerrville twenty fifty. Uh, it is, uh, identified for, as a catalyst area, uh, and this is, uh, one of those infrastructure projects that will help catalyze that economic development. Again, this is just kind of that rough, uh, shape of, of how that, uh, project will generally look. Again, a lot of engineering that, that needs to further go into that project before it's bid later this summer. Again, these are the pages out of the Kerrville twenty fifty adopted comprehensive plan, uh, identifying strategic catalyst area eight, uh, and various development pieces, pieces that the community said were appropriate, uh, throughout the, that general, uh, catalyzed area. Uh, this is also the, uh, master, uh, thoroughfare plan, uh, and you can see, uh, that, that extension, uh, was identified, uh, through there as a connector. So, uh, we came to this, uh, body on March twelfth. You approved us to go ahead and go to E I C and seek that funding, uh, for the city's fifty percent of the development project. Uh, on March eighteenth, we presented that to the E I C. They said to come back, drafted, uh, a, a project funding agreement, set a public hearing. We did that. We went to them on April fifteenth. We held that public hearing. Uh, they approved the funding agreement, uh, and so we are back again, uh, to this body here on April twenty-third, uh, with really, again, three parts. One part, uh, the project funding agreement that puts us, uh, in, in conjunction and partnered up with E I C from a funding, uh, perspective. Uh, the partnership and development interlocal cooperation agreement with K I S D, uh, basically indicating that they're fifty percent partner, we're fifty percent partner. Uh, and then the actual design, engineering, and construction contract, so we can go ahead and, and begin to move that forward. Uh, and we would anticipate final design engineering sometime later, uh, uh, this spring. As we mentioned before, we do have to go through, uh, text dot review, uh, as well as any, and the traffic impact analysis. Both of those components will, uh, certainly impact the final design of the project. Uh, and then we would anticipate bidding this, uh, hopefully late summer, uh, maybe early fall, but we're really trying to push that forward. Uh, we know that, uh, Dr. Faust is in the audience here and, and he's got a hard date. He wants those students in there by, uh, fall of twenty twenty-one. And we want to make sure that, uh, we're, uh, accommodating that schedule, so, uh, we, we want to stay on track with this one. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, uh, but it might not exactly pertain to the specific request, but the, Dr. Faust may be able to answer this. Will you have any, um, desire to have any access off of five thirty-four? Um, you said you have frontage on five thirty-four. Would you have any type of turn-in, pickup, that type of thing on five thirty-four and Olympic? Thank you.
So, yes ma'am, there's one driveway off of five thirty-four that we currently have in design, so we're in design development now. Uh, but on that initial site layout, there's one driveway off of five thirty-four that is, uh, north of Tybee High School on the northern boundary of the property line. So, um, where exactly that driveway is depends on the information we get back, um, from text dot on, uh, what our, uh, deceleration lanes look like.
Right.
We generally want to run that near the northern boundary line.
So if someone didn't need to get on Olympic, they could pick their student up from five thirty-four and get right back on five thirty-four, they wouldn't even need to get on Olympic?
Yes, ma'am. So we designed, uh, essentially a loop where they could come, uh, from Loop five thirty-four, pick up their student, because, uh, student pickup is only in the front of the building, uh, make a loop back out and go five thirty-four and not travel on Olympic at all.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, that would be if they were coming from the north, traveling south.
Right.
Back up just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Tell us your name and where you live.
I'm sorry. Uh, my name's Mark Faust, I'm superintendent of K I S D, and I live in the ETJ of Kerrville.
ETJ, oh, okay, okay.
One other curiosity question. Are you considering different times for senior high would start at one time, junior high started at another to help mitigate this?
It is imperative that we stagger those start times, so I can't tell you who's gonna go in what order just yet. Uh, we, we want to make sure we come to the right decision there. But we will be staggering the start times of those three schools to try to mitigate, uh, the congestion.
We'll, we'll be mitigating, but basically we'll have a rush hour, or how, how long, if you had to guess, would the stagger last?
You know, the, uh, that, that's where we gotta pick the right order. So elementary is, is fairly tight. Uh, when we, we got some data back on the traffic study and, uh, from, you know, seven thirty to eight thirty is that peak window. It's kind of the same that, uh, you look at the traffic counts and they, they rise and fall like a bell curve within that hour of the start time of schools, so it just de- depends. But I, I haven't met a school yet that didn't have some rush hour traffic where you're trying to get six hundred people into a building and within a thirty to forty-five minute timeframe. So, uh, it's just the nature of the beast and we're, we're used to that. But if we can separate those start times of the schools, it's basically gonna, uh, diminish the, that peak impact. If we tried to have all three of those at the same time, or even the middle school and the high school, they're currently running very close to the same time. And if we kept that same schedule, I think the loop and Olympic would be a bit of a mess. So we want to separate those. I don't know if I can answer your question exactly, but, uh, Tybee High School stretches out a little bit more because kids come and go on their own and, and they have athletics and things before school. The middle school is, and the elementaries are probably the tightest come and go. Uh, I can't give you exact minutes.
It'll be a high traffic zone for an extended period in the morning and then again in the evening, right?
Yes, sir. I mean, yeah, it's fair. There, there will be increased.
So let me, let me ask something else while you're up there, because it would be an impact to the school. But, um, you know, she's talking about San Jacinto, which is at the top, and just popped in my head, I'm not suggesting we do this, I'm just saying. Um, if, instead of make, cause, cause I'm gonna tell you, if I'm coming out of the middle school, I, I am probably gonna avoid the loop. I'm gonna, cause everybody lives the other direction. I would want to go up Olympic Drive. Would it be really the end of the world if, instead of connecting Olympic Drive, we had sort of a, a dead end, if you will, at the top of it? Where it's not a drive-through, but it's a walk-through or it's a trailer or something, so that it forced everybody to go the loop and Singing Winds, which is what they do now. Cause I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, I'm coming out of Tybee High School, and if that's connected, I'm going straight. I'm not taking a left and, and then going to Singing Winds. So I'm putting a heavier impact on that Olympic Drive running down next to Tom Daniels. If it was just a, a dead end, would that negatively impact what you think you're trying to do with the school, the new school?
Certainly wouldn't be my preference. We would like our buses to be able to come out of the bus ramp exit and make a left to go one direction and a right to go the other direction. They're, they naturally split and go opposite directions, so, uh, that's, that's not my preference at all.
And how many stoplights would we have in front of the schools? We'll have one at Olympic. We've already got one.
Olympic and the loop.
And the loop, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's all that I'm.
So there would just be the one that's there plus one new one as far as you know right now.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's text dot would have to.
Do you have any other questions for Dr. Faust?
Yeah, one question, Mayor. Um, what's the school planning to do to direct the, the watershed, the drainage? Cause you're on the north side of Olympic, or if you look at the to- uh, topographic map, it's kind of strange. Would you direct, direct it north or come across Olympic and go down south where like the, uh, Yamaha dealership is or whatever that?
So not being much of a civil engineer, uh, I would defer to Alan Lunsckog with C E C. He's working with us on the project.
Okay.
Do you mind if I?
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
I have to punt that one. I don't know that you don't want my answer.
I'm Alan Lunsckog with Civil Engineering Consultants. I'm the engineer for the school district on this project. Also did Tybee High School a number of years ago and Tally Elementary. So we've worked in the city off and on for years. There are like three watersheds on that property. If you go up the Olympic Drive right away that's not open, there's a ravine that comes across near the top. And that water goes on across the city property. Some of the water goes under the culvert that's on the north end of the school. And the rest comes down towards the loop. Those patterns will all be maintained, but we'll have onsite detention basins that'll mitigate the increased runoff.
Everything on the actual school site would be going north to that, to that culvert. Cause I think.
Not, I mean, some of it, there'll be a culvert underneath.
Can you bring up the map?
Olympic Drive at the intersection, and water will continue on down the bar ditch towards the culvert that's south of the high school.
But everything kind of where that, this isn't, wherever it's annexed, and that'll be where the school kind of is, where it says, school campus is pretty much the heart of the campus.
Yeah, on the, kinda on the, the two blue squares with lettering that are in the, on the top on Olympic Drive. The one on the right is where there's a low that comes across Olympic, and that comes on down and comes out near the south end of the high school. So that area of the campus is gonna be a football stadium. So that water and any water that comes off of Shriner's property above the school will follow that ravine on down to the culvert underneath the loop. Uh, kind of above the photo, the upper part of the school site drains into that culvert. There's a stock bond on Shriner's property just north of the school. That water will go into that culvert underneath and go around the north side of the high school. And then like the middle forty percent of the school drains to the loop right now.
Okay.
And that will be caught in, in detention basins, slowed down, and then led off into the bar ditch. And there'll be a culvert underneath the intersection there. The water will continue on down on the west side of the loop till it gets to the culvert.
Reason I bring it up, I know that city property, we're looking at maybe having someone develop that for housing and other things. And there's any way we can get on the same page of, instead of having that watershed go under and across the city property, if we can maybe route it down Olympic Drive or something and.
I mean, the, the property has some pretty significant topo to it. I mean, we're gonna be cutting fifteen, twenty feet in some places for the school. And trying to, to shift water between watersheds is, is not a good idea and actually against state law. So, I mean, we don't want to be redirecting water on the property where it's not going now, cause somebody downstream could sue. And that's not a position we want you, the district, or us to be in.
Okay.
Alright, uh, just a second. If, would you like to speak? Okay.
Thank you.
Stephanie Stewart, twenty-two oh five San Jacinto Drive. So, uh, as you can see on the map, I'm right there where the little green circle is where Alamo and San Jacinto are. Um, I'm kind of concerned about the water and how it already, cause when it comes down Olympic, it is quite a bit of water and somewhat bloody, especially when they release the pool water from Olympic right there at the bottom. Um, but anyhow, uh, where it says that there's Shriner University up there, and, uh, I guess they're intending to sell that property and do other stuff. I already have the issue, uh, and have had it in the past, uh, with the water coming down, cause it's a pretty steep incline of the hill, um, where Alamo comes down and all up there, and then there's like a house, I believe, right at the top of Alamo on San Jacinto. And it's a, an incline there, and there's nothing but colici. I get a ton of water that comes through, and it comes down Alamo, and I'm, like I say, I'm right there. I've had at least a nice young, or gentleman named Joel come and put a, I'm hoping I'm saying it right, a berm or a burma to help. So the water will stop coming into my driveway because I'm on a slope, and it would just come straight into my garage, and I've had been flooded, I don't know how many times. So I'm concerned about where this water is going, and if you are going to be building more in through Shriner, that area up there. Um, I'm assuming the blue is where the water flow and water sewage upgrades are gonna be happening. Hopefully somewhere it's gonna catch it and not just come down the street where me and my neighbor, cause I know he's had to build up his driveway as well, where he has to go up, and then he goes down into his garage, um, where we've had issues in the water coming in pretty high, especially during some really good rainfalls, so, um, and there's nothing but colici and dirt, and it's all uphill, all the way. At least all the way through that Shriner area, and then obviously I know it starts to go down. So I'm just concerned about the water as well through there.
And in, in terms of the engineering related to the school, does that relate to her questions about where she is down there on San Jacinto?
Yeah, let me see if I can address this, Alan. So, let's see if I got a, oh, okay. So the ridge line, get the cursor to work. Okay, so basically the ridge line on the watershed is, is pretty close to the property line, actually. So the vast majority of, uh, really development all across this corridor actually flows this direction, uh, towards Loop five thirty-four. So you've got, um, this watershed in this general area, uh, flows through kind of a little bit of a low spot halfway down the hill, uh, across here, which is where we're planning for a culvert. Uh, and then you've got the majority of this watershed will actually be coming down towards this corner, where you'll have a detention pond, uh, that will then flow through a culvert this direction and through basically an existing channel, uh, natural channel that goes through this area. Uh, all of this undeveloped city area is in a, a, basically another watershed, uh, that will flow, uh, down to this corner. So all of this basic, uh, vacant property, uh, really does not at all flow, uh, in this direction towards the existing neighborhood. Uh, so there's really only one vacant parcel, and that is an existing single-family residential parcel, uh, that's up at the top of here. Um, there, there won't really be any other drainage impact, uh, certainly not for this project.
Okay, can, can you sort of address then the water that she's describing? Where is it coming from?
Is it coming from that single-family?
Purely coming from, uh, you know, existing, uh, development within that neighborhood and existing impervious cover within that neighborhood. But even the roadway project essentially doesn't pick up until the top of the hill, um, that's then going down the hill the other direction. So even that impervious cover, you know, won't, won't have an effect necessarily on this drainage at all.
Maybe it might improve the situation though, at some future development in, in the fact that if they, it is developed, if they do catch the water that they're not catching now, which is going into that property. I'm just saying, I guess there's a possibility the future could actually see an improvement to her getting all that water.
Yeah, certainly as we look at sidewalk development, uh, which actually has some sections that are along, uh, that fill in some gaps along the existing Olympic Drive, uh, that's something we'll look at.
While you get to the pointer there, where, where are the school proposed right now, school entrances onto Olympic Drive?
There will be the, a entrance about right in here, about four hundred feet back from the intersection. That will be for parent entrance, parents, visitors, stuff like that. A little further back up, there'll be a bus entrance, so the bus traffic will come in and out this entrance. There'll be another entrance up here at the corner that's just for the football stadium parking. It's got minimal parking. It's, uh, you know, just a middle school stadium. And we're looking at another driveway, apparent drop-off entrance up at this end of the property. And in the middle, in, in the front of the school kind of curves around in an arc in here, and these two driveways merge in a big loop. And so it provides substantial amount of what we call queuing or stacking room. So the parents will be able to get off the roads, and if there's any backup, that will occur in the, the school. That's something that wasn't done years ago with schools, but it's a standard practice now to provide queuing room.
So you're gonna have three entrances coming onto Olympic. Is that right, I just heard?
Yeah, but one's only buses.
I know, but.
Yeah, and then one pedestrian and the, the stadium wouldn't be used, that entrance wouldn't be used during school hours really much.
Okay, alright. Have you si- have you signed up on this agenda item?
No.
Oh, no, I, no, I, okay, I was talking. No, uh, it's not. Okay, any other questions?
Just one question.
Keep more, but go ahead.
Just to clarify, everything from Singing Wind all the way over will be, uh, in a school zone, flashing lights, school zone at certain times of the day, that, that whole area.
That's the current intent, albeit.
Okay.
The school's.
Alright, Mr. Vogel.
I have some questions, more about utilities along the street or in the right of way. It might be for city.
I'm thoroughly familiar with all the utilities.
Okay, well, where the sewer mains gonna be located? Are they gonna be in the street?
There's an existing sanitary sewer along the loop.
Olympic Drive, are they gonna be in the pavement or off to the side?
Well, okay, so, on Olympic Drive, on the south side of the street, there's a fiber, existing fiber optic cable that'll be outside the pavement. K Pub is gonna, plans to put in underground electric. We anticipate that they'll be between that fiber optic in the back of the curb. As part of the district's development process, they have to extend a sanitary sewer up to serve the undeveloped area that's above them in the watershed. Because that south parkway will be full between the fiber optic and K Pub, that sewer will be under the street. Uh, under the pavement, under the, kind of the west, eastbound lane of the street. Uh, on the north side of the street, there's an existing twelve-inch water line that's out from underneath the pavement. There's also an existing, uh, Atlas Gas line that's out from underneath the pavement. So, the only new utility that'll be under the pavement would be the water, would be the sewer line.
Um, like, just something to think about when we're doing that, maybe, I'd hate to have the sewer under the street and all this new development comes on right, a year after we build the street and we're cutting the street we just built.
At, at the north, I guess called the southwest corner of the school, there'll be a stubout that comes across into Shriner's property to allow them to extend a public main into their property in the future. And then as you come or the sewer ends kinda right up here at the edge of this residential property and the Shriner property. And there'll be another stub here that comes out from underneath the pavement. So that if this property is ever developed as anything other than what it is now, they won't have to come under the pavement. And then we'll be working with the city to look at where we need stubs along here for, to serve this property. Uh, this property, uh, the low runs kinda right through the middle like that. When it develops, it would be more likely to have an internal sewer line coming off the loop and up the low here, letting these areas drain in. But we will look at providing some stubs where the city wants them, the stubout from underneath the street. So, we won't have to be cutting the street in the future.
That's great. Um, the other, other one was, looks like effluence provided on Loop five thirty-four, so you won't need to run it up.
No, and the, uh, the landscape architect is evaluating, you know, the feasibility and how much irrigated area the district is gonna have to, to look at, you know, using that reuse water for irrigation.
The only thing you've not mentioned is the sidewalk or bike lanes.
There'll be a, as part of the, the proposal right now envisions a ten-foot wide sidewalk on the school side, uh, on the, the school property. As you get up past the school property and the road transitions back to a narrower right-of-way on this part of Olympic, uh, the sidewalk narrows down to eight feet to stay within the right-of-way. So, we don't have to acquire any property from anybody to do that. But all along the school, it would be a ten-foot. This intersection right here will be improved to provide a pedestrian signalized crossing. So that you can, if you're walking to the high school, there'll be a pedestrian signal. That's the plan, all subject to text-out approval. To be able to stop the traffic and have a crosswalk that'll take you across the highway.
So, so bikes are gonna be running on the sidewalk with pedestrians? Is that what we're, I don't know who I'm asking this to.
Bikes always have the option to, to go on roadway. There, that's a legal vehicle, uh, within a roadway element. Uh, but we are, uh, planning on an enhanced, uh, sidewalk element that's ten feet wide, uh, to provide better access, recognizing that bikes often get on the sidewalks.
But, so Curville doesn't prevent, cause everywhere I've ever been, bikes aren't supposed to be on the sidewalk. That's what I was asking.
Rather than calling it a sidewalk, it's really a multi-use path. I mean, the ten-foot width is what you're typically seeing now in a lot of cities, you know, rather than having a bike lane, uh, you know, they'll move the sidewalks, the bicycles off onto a multi-use path. And ten foot's fairly wide.
Thank you. Alright, um, do we have a motion on?
I had, I had one question that had to do with the funding agreement.
Okay.
So, it has nothing to do with this. Um, it's just basically, you know, we're, we're listing the project five oh one, one oh three that EIC, I guess, approved. So, what is the supposed new or expanded business enterprise that we're promoting with this utility? So, it's not the school, is it?
No, it is not the school. It is all the elements identified within strategic catalyst area eight within your, uh, comprehensive plan.
Okay, but, okay, just, because it's, it just seems like we're expanding the use of that to where we can just, we can do infrastructure anywhere we want and cite this as for EIC development, it looks like. Cause most of it'll be housing along that road and so.
I think the EIC looked specifically because this was an identified strategic catalyst area that it was most appropriate to provide catalytic infrastructure within it.
Right, you see that we're bringing a school on the one side of Olympic Drive. On the other side, we're looking at bringing housing. Neither of which would be business enterprises that we're promoting by this development. So, I'm not gonna vote it down. I'm just saying, cause it, it's not our place. EIC's already done this. I'm just saying, it's a pretty broad stroke we're using for a, a pretty strict rule.
I think it's a, it's a mix of uses, not just, uh, residential, but also commercial i- in, in nature that will go along that corridor.
On the loop. We've been talking about it being on the loop, not on Olympic.
Uh, throughout, really throughout, uh, not necessarily directly onto Olympic per se, uh, but certainly feeding into Olympic. Uh, you know, I think that there, there will be a connector, uh, as identified through the transportation plan, the thoroughfare plan, uh, back to the other, you know, hundreds of vacant acres there within that loop section.
Alright, so on seven A, um.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
If it's time, if there aren't any more questions.
Yes, sir and ma'am. And so the motions we're looking for on these three are for, uh, the city council to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute all three of these, uh, these pieces.
Right.
Are we to do that separately?
Separately.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we authorize staff to execute the project funding agreement for seven A as it pertains to the five items that are listed under the attachments.
Alright.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to second. All in favor of that motion, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand. Right, and it is unanimous. Seven B is inter-local cooperation agreement. I should let you read that.
Read all three of them in.
Alright.
She read all three.
That's right, that's right. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, discussion questions on the inter-local cooperation agreement.
Make a motion to approve seven B as is.
Alright. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. All in favor of seven B, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. And then, uh, seven C, authorized execution of professional services agreement with civil engineering consultants in the amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Questions, comments? Alright, somebody take a move on that?
I'll move that we authorize execution of personal services agreement with civil engineering consultants at, uh, for a po- proposed fee of a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Okay, and, uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a second. All in favor, uh, the raised hand. And it carries. And probably nobody else needs this, but we're gonna take a six-minute break. At seven thirty-eight. Okay, back in session. Uh, I just wanted to comment, the, uh, uh, Mark McDaniel, city manager, is away on family vacation. And the EA, uh, EA is, is, uh, running the show tonight in a sense. Are you running the show? Yeah, okay, okay. He's deputy, uh, city manager. But I was wondering, would you like to move from the co-pilot seat over to the pilot's?
No, sir, I'm good.
You alright?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you Mr. Harvey?
Alright.
You don't.
Okay, um, we're at eight A. This is information and discussion, no action. And if you will read it in for us, please.
Presentation on information received and strategies learned concerning water resource management.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and start, start us off. Basically what, what it is is, um, there was a, a summit conference, whatever you wanna call it, in, um, in Austin in March that, I'm just gonna go Vincent and, and I attended, uh, attended, where we were, they were mostly focusing on, um, things like, uh, it wasn't strictly conservation, but the idea of looking at water in a more, uh, broad base, uh, the sourcing of it and the distribution of it and the different sources that you have. Uh, seeing it as something that is being called the, a one-water approach, uh, which I'll go into a little bit more. Um, and so, we just wanted to give, give back a little bit of the information we received, some of which would apply, could apply pretty easily to Curville, some of which maybe not so much, but is something to keep your eye on the ball, looking forward types of things, a little more progressive look at how we handle water. Um, so I'm gonna let, um, Vincent start off with, uh, his takeaways and then I'll follow up with, uh, my own.
Okay, um, this is something, the Water Now Alliance is something I'd like Curville to be involved in and part of. Uh, they offer programs, ideas and opportunities for cities and, um, learned that Curville's already doing a lot of these things such as ASR wells, the reuse water, impervious covers. Some, uh, new ideas to me were green infrastructure and treating stormwater as a resource. There's over two hundred leaders, uh, across the United States that attended. One of the polls that, we, we did polls during, uh, all these workshops, one of the polls that was taken, uh, questioned whether cities should incentivize new strategies or mandate and require new strategies. And over eighty percent of the leaders attending sided with the incentivizing. Um, one is, one is, uh, incentive discussed was to give rebates on water bills and, um, this is kinda doing the green infrastructure, which is, uh, minimizing concrete use for drainage and using natural ground and natural plants. Um, another one was the pervious pavers where we're kinda doing that already with granite parking lots and riverstone parking lots, things of that nature. Where you're having more absorbent to the ground rather than runoff. Um, and the Water Now Project Accelerator is happening right now. Cities can apply for it. And Water Now will select two projects from the, the United States to receive professional hands-on support and technical and program assistance. Uh, offerings include up to two hundred and fifty hours of professional support and three to six months, which is valued at twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, a topic that seemed to be, to affect most cities attending was communication, um, as far as rate increases, that was the biggest one. And now Curville's looking to another ra- rate increase for water and sewer. And I'd like to see us start communicating now, it's not too early, uh, to the public, what the increase will be, what it's gonna cover and why it is needed. Uh, I'd also like to, these are things I'd like to see us continue doing in some of the new projects that I saw. Curville continuing with the ASR, which I believe we're doing number three right now, maybe looking into number three. Um, same thing as, uh, the pervious pavers continues and so, not only allow businesses to have these, but actually incentivize them to do this. Uh, that might help. I think there's a project by Lower Street right now just being, just being built right now. That might be an option to help with problems like that. And, uh, I'd also like to see Curville continue looking for new reuse, uh, water customers. And the way the rates are structured right now can be a challenge. The revenue the city's collecting from the reuse is much lower than the annual debt costs and operations and maintenance. I'd like to see the city act, um, really, really go after new customers along, um, I think the middle school right now is a customer where it is on sixteen and Peterson. And I believe they're gonna leave, and I'm not sure if there're gonna be new customers or not the new site, but we might be able to branch the infrastructure that's there off towards the interstate to help our gateway entrance and irrigate that area. Um, I'm personally still not ready to commit to direct potable reuse until it's our only option. And, uh, I have two problems with this. Number one, and number two.
You had to go there.
Ideas, uh, from the, uh, conference, I would like to see Curville pursue, again, our incentivizing the.
Can, can I censor a, uh, council member?
Uh, yeah, just incentivizing the parking, the pervious parking and, uh, the green, the, what is it, green jam, green drainage, without having a negative impact to the community. Um, and I believe I've shared Water, uh, Now Alliance with everybody on council and I really encourage y'all to become members. They got a lot of really good information and opportunities out there. Kind of what I had from.
Good, good.
I have a question. Uh, I'm interested in those pervious pavers. Are they expensive and are they, will they last for twenty years, ten years? You're talking about putting them on roads?
No, just like parking areas.
Okay.
Just like, uh, Monroe's, um, I believe Plant House has done it, uh, River Trail Cottages, um.
Oh, okay.
You know, I'm talking about, it's just, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Nature Center.
I was thinking little pavers, okay, never mind. I know, now I know what you're talking, okay.
Seems like they're holding up pretty well. I was, uh, thinking they might kinda wash away, but they, they've all been holding pretty well.
They actually get used as, um, some bike trails to it. And so it, it, you know, where you take, actually in, in
It doesn't move too much.
In the UT campus, they actually shut down a street that used to be a driving street. And it's about five or six blocks, it's Speedway. And it, they put in these pavers basically and you have kinda sidewalk on the side. And it's, it's kind of like a, a walking boulevard through the middle of their, uh, campus. And it, it, it turns out pretty cool. We don't really have a use for necessarily that here yet, but, you know, it's, it's something to think about. You can use them in things like that, instead of doing a, like the River Trail, instead of doing a complete concrete trail, you could do something like that.
Hmm, okay.
So.
Interesting.
And then, so is that it, only question for this? Okay, so, some of the stuff that, that I was getting out of it was some stuff that I've heard before, but I don't know if anybody's heard of this, this concept, this one-water solution, um, where you view all of your water sources as potential, for lack of a better way, looking at potential potable water. So, all of your water is kind of equal in value to you. You don't, um, undervalue one over the other cause they all are part of the same, you've got your limited resource. And one big thing that people are pushing for is kinda how you do str- stormwater. Um, you know, most of the history of what we do is just get rid of it as fast as we can, just direct it and get it out of here. And there's ways to utilize that as a source, instead of just throwing it away, you could actually utilize it. Um, another one that we already do is reuse water, but, um, one of the things that everybody seems to be talking about, it actually got talked about at one of our little sessions, is, um, sustainable pricing of that and smart pricing. And so, you, you have to kind of view each source of water, like I say, with the equiv- equivalent value. It's all potentially potable. So, you don't wanna just give away any of it. And so you wanna look at stuff like that. Um, the other is something that is, um, probably not, we're probably too small to use this sort of thing, but decentralized, um, water sources. So, uh, for instance, in, a- again, in, in Austin, the campus itself is actually, um, self-sufficient power and, uh, I think water. Um, and so, and they also have buildings that are, you, you've seen it in bigger cities where you, you have buildings that actually produce their own reuse water that's servicing just that building. So like the toilets, for instance, might be all reuse water that's just from that building itself. And, uh, you could, we don't have probably big enough buildings that makes it scalable and cost-effective, but, uh, it's something to think about moving forward. The other is double plumbing buildings so that you can be in advance of reuse water, um, being used in buildings that maybe come from our, um, our reuse distribution system that you already have. So, getting it more, like he, like he said, uh, finding more customers. Very few cities do this, but some do it, where you essentially are reu- using reuse water throughout your, um, city, not just to big customers, irrigation customers. But the other aspect of one water that you, you need to start thinking about is using reuse water is good and, and it arguably takes you off of potable. Um, but as part of that, you gotta back it up with still conserving, truly conserving the water. So, if we create a water reuse system and what we do on the backend of that is create a bunch of volume users of irrigation water, we're kind of, um, you know, cutting off our, our legs before we can get anywhere. So, in, in our example, we arguably. Before we can get anywhere, so in, in our example, we arguably built a reuse system to service the ball fields. Uh, so we created a, a, a demand for something as we were creating the supply, maybe if we'd have looked at something like turf. The, the reuse water could have been used as a uh, a broader source for us, so things like that are what they're talking about. And a big part of what they did talk about was um, that all these id- ideas that they come, that they were discussing. Are actually scalable and they're a resource for finding out just kind of how we could uh, do that. So I would uh, I would encourage council to look into, um, like you saying, the Water Now Alliance. This uh, this summit was called Tap Into Resilience, they have a whole, you know, resource website about that. And just, we can be forward-looking um, with our, our water sources, just as we have been so far with ASR and reuse. We can just continue to be that way, um, so that's pretty much what it was.
Some good ideas.
It's interesting when uh, the engineer was talking about the storm runoff, I thought to myself, how do, how do we utilize that better?
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's, that's basically what this was talking about is, and that's a big one, stormwater. This, like I said, historically, just get rid of it, it's like, you know, it's killing us, just get it out of here, steer it away and get, bit it gone, but you can utilize it. It uh, it takes some issues with uh, visit, to process the, the stormwater, you're looking at, you know, there's some. Costs involved with that, so, but you can, you can use it, they had buildings that were, um, I don't remember what they called them, but. You put planters, it's, it's filtering water basically, so you have like uh, where the rooftop gardens, that essentially water down. And it's, it, the, the garden at the top is essentially filtering the water, so you can do things like that. Again, we don't have huge buildings, but we can do small things and, and like he was saying, there's different incentivizing um, ways. You know, programs that are out there that you can get funded um, through, you know, a national uh, fund, so anyways.
One of the most efficient and interesting water systems in, in Curville is at the hospital. How they're, how they're capturing water, how they're reusing water, it's, it's very efficient.
I wonder if the middle school is considering any of those, I'm sure they are, planning in the middle school, I mean, that's a big building.
I hope, yeah.
High building, but I mean, it's.
Yeah.
A, a big footprint.
Okay, uh, eight B, financial update, Ms. Dozier.
Alright, good evening, I appreciate y'all sticking with, um, sticking with me and I will try to make this fairly brief. Because I know that um, it's getting late, um, but I'm gonna give a brief financial update and then a little bit of early information regarding property taxes. Um, so this is a financial update for the month ended um, March thirty-first. I'm gonna start with the general fund, so year-to-date through March thirty-first for the general fund, um, they received. Uh, revenues of, let's see, of seventeen point five million compared to expense of twelve point seven million. Um, so that put us in a net position of um, four point eight million dollars to the positive. That's normal at this type, time of year because property taxes are all due and, or pretty much all due in January. Um, and we are tracking pretty close to budget too, as far as um, our net position goes. Looking specifically at general fund revenues, um, property tax collections are ahead of uh, twenty eighteen, slightly lower than budget. Uh, um, appears to just be a timing issue though, we think that we will hit budget there. Um, our strong sales tax performance continues, so year-to-date, sales tax is up five point four percent. Um, compared to twenty eighteen and we're also um, better than budget by three point two percent. And we've seen strong increases in our largest sectors, which are retail, food service, manufacturing and construction. Moving on to the general fund expenditures, we're looking good there, um, we are coming in right now a little bit under um, budget. And um, that is primarily due to street spending that just hasn't quite started yet. Um, and we, the budget number had, had anticipated a little bit of street spending that hasn't occurred yet. Um, moving on to the water fund, the water fund is having a little bit um, more difficult time this year because of the weather that we've had. So year-to-date through March thirty-first, the water fund has received revenues of five point three million compared to expenditures of five point nine million. And looking at the revenues in particular, you'll see that water and reuse sales are lower than budget and lower than twenty eighteen. Um, and that's due to all the rainfall that we've had, so year-to-date through March thirty-first, we have um. Sixteen inches more rainfall than that same period last year, um, so that has impacted our revenue significantly. And on the expenditure side, um, we have been controlling expenditures, so there's good news there. Um, we've had much better than budget um, expenditures um, on the chemical side and maintenance side. Some of that um, could change in the summer months as we require more chemicals and the maintenance side really depends on. You know, what, what breaks. Um, and our expenditures are lower than, than last year because last year contained a, a two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar transfer. Um, related to the Legion lift station to our capital projects fund. Moving on to our other funds, um, on the development services fund, you'll remember that. We broke development services out into its own fund for increased transparency this year. Um, so year-to-date through the, um, through March, and I'm looking at the middle column here, the year-to-date twenty nineteen actual column. Um, they've had revenue of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand compared to expenditures of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand. And on the expenditure side, they have already incurred a, a three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar transfer this year. Related to their code rewrite and development services software projects. Um, the golf fund has also been impacted by the wet weather that we've had, so year-to-date, they're showing revenues of three hundred and fifty-three thousand. Compared to expenditures of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And then lastly, our hotel occupancy fund, um, expenditures of five hundred and ninety-four thousand com- or I'm sorry, revenues of five hundred and ninety-four thousand. Compared to expenditures of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, um, and you'll see that compared to last year, we're up thirteen point four percent. Some of that is uh, that Yogi Bear audit payment that you'll remember, but um, but anyway, strong showing on the hotel occupancy side. Moving on to um, property taxes, some of the things that I wanted to address, so. Um, I have not received a data dump yet, we haven't received anything from Kirkad yet, I asked for a report instead of a data dump. So maybe you get the data dump faster than the report and I'll have to remember that next time. Um, but we are supposed to receive something from Kirkad um, this week. Uh, but I wanted to just kind of go through the things that I do know at this point, um, so I don't have any numbers available. But I know that the process starts with Kirkad, so Kirkad is an independent entity. Um, they're not, Kirkad is not controlled by the taxing entities, um, there's a arms-length relationship there that's set by state statute. And that's to protect the independence of the appraisal district and create a separation of duties between. The property valuation duty and the rate-setting function. And the um, appraisal districts are actually regulated by the comptroller's office, the state comptroller. So every ye- um, well, it's every two years, the comptroller um, reviews appraisal districts um, by testing values. And then they also um, do an evaluation of appraisal methods and procedures. And they, when they're testing values, they're testing compliance with this tax code section, uh, section twenty-three dot oh-one. That requires taxable property to be appraised at market value. And what they're primarily testing for is related to state funding that goes to school districts. So the comptroller looks to make sure that the appraisal districts are setting appraisals at market value. And if they find that an appraisal district is not using a fair market value. Um, then that impacts the state funding that the school districts get. So, just, you know, that's not city-related, but just an interesting note there, that there is some regulation there with the comptroller's office. Um, so Kirkad itself is governed by a board of directors and that board of directors hires a chief appraiser, they set the budget. And they appoint the appraisal review board, the board does not set valuations or run day-to-day operations. Um, that appraisal review board that's appointed is a separate body that hears and resol- um, resolves appraisal disputes. And it obviously sounds like there's a lot of issues with appraisals, um, Kirkad has information on their website and I think um, they. With what they mailed out, there is information as well, um, if you are interested in appealing, um, the appeal does have to be filed with Kirkad. By May fifteenth, um, twenty nineteen. As far as what, um, where the city comes in, so um, the city receives a preliminary tax roll. From Kirkad by May first, um, they've indicated that we should get it this week, but they're obligated to give it to us by May first. Um, we receive a certified tax roll from Kirkad by July twenty-fifth. And then it's the city's job to set the city portion of our tax rate. And it's important to note, I think, that um, the city portion is twenty-four percent of the total tax rate. And then when you break that, that down even further, um, twenty-one percent of that tax rate, of your total tax rate. Goes for maintenance and operations for city services and then three percent of the tax rate. So that's seven cents of the two dollar and twenty-eight cents total tax rate, three percent goes for debt service. And I think there's a lot of misinformation out there about appraisals being related to city debt. Or about property taxes being related to city debt, so I really wanna make clear that three percent of the property tax. That is paid goes to fund city debt and I know it's a complicated subject and I know it's, um, it gets real intricate. And I'm happy to um, you know, answer questions if people want to call me directly or email me directly. I also really encourage citizens to go to the city's website, we have a debt transparency page. Um, we also have debt information in our audited financial reports and in our budget book. Um, so yeah, three percent is what um, is being used of the property taxes to fund city debt. And um, for those of you that were here last time, you may remember that eighty-nine percent of the um, the city's debt. Is paid using water and sewer revenue or sales tax revenue, it's not property tax at all. Um, and just to note, so you know, the city has a twenty-four percent of the total property tax. Obviously, most of it goes to the school district, so fifty-two percent of your property tax payment goes to the school district. And then twenty-one percent goes um, to the county, or I'm sorry, twenty-two percent goes to the county. Um, there's, you know, a few other um, entities in there, but um, definitely the majority goes to the school district. Um, and the city has um, had the same property tax, has had the same or lower property taxes for the last ten years. Um, our tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty will be set as part of the budget process that council will be voting on. Will have public hearings on, all of that, and that'll occur in the August and September timeframe. And so, I just wanna make sure everyone understands that, that the city does not set, impact or influence valuations at all. And there is independence and separation between the taxing entities and the appraisal district as mandated by the state. And I also just wanna clear up any misconception here, the tax rate for the TERS is the same as the tax rate for the rest of the city, there's no difference there. And um, that's all I have, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Dozier?
One mayor, um, you might not have this offhand, but next year with the water and sewer rate increases, would we still be? Would we, is that short, whatever we're short this year, will we be making up for that right now, or is that, will we still be short?
Um, it's, you know, it really is dependent on this summer, what happens this summer. Um, because of the way our water rates are structured, um, they're just very volatile. And if we have um, a very dry summer, um, and if, you know, we continue to have luck with um, pumps not going out. And you know, our maintenance costs stay low, we could end up okay, um, but it's just very de- um, weather-dependent. And um, maintenance-dependent at this point, so I can't tell you for sure. Um, but we did in last year's um, budget workshops and in our budget book, you know, we put out um, proposals. For what kind of increases we would have in twenty twenty, um, on the water side and on the sewer side. And we are, you know, obviously taking a very um, close look at that as we, we're going through the budget process. But it i- it is something that, you know, has been discussed last year as well, so it, um, you know, I wanna make sure it's not a surprise to anyone. Um, so, but yeah, we are looking at that and um, and it's very difficult to project those water and sewer revenues, um, for sure. I'm sorry, that doesn't answer your question.
No, that's fine, that, that answers, you're good.
I was wondering if I could ask you to send me these two sheets that just.
Yes, yes, I added these on.
Email ones.
There was a lot of, of questions, so um.
Thank you.
Definitely will.
And Amy, I don't have any questions, but I would like to add, uh, I am the person who sits on the, the appraisal district. Board of Directors and uh, we have, my jaw dropped, just like everybody else's jaw dropped, when I opened my taxes. And uh, we have absolutely, positively, no influence on those appraised values. That is, it's done independently and it's all mandated by the state, as, as you said. There is, there is absolutely uh, no way that we can influence that and it has nothing to do with, with, as, as you have said. Has nothing to do with uh, the debt that the city has, projects that the city has, it is all independent. From uh, and I think Bruce had, had talked a little bit about some of the things that he's heard, it's all over Texas. Uh, my kids in San Antonio have had the same problem, I've talked to a couple of the realtors in other parts, they've had the same problem. Property in Ingram has gone up just as much as property in Curville, it's uh, and, and what they've done, uh, a lot of it. I kind of call it, they're, they're catching up, bringing our appraised values up to our market value. And as a Realtor, our market value has been way over our appraised values for a long time. The last time we really, that we had any appraised values at market value was when we were in the recession. And that was the only time that, and even then, it wasn't always, so uh, it's uh, it's, it's important for people to understand this. What I'd like to see and where we've got, you know, what we would like on future agendas, uh, we need a workshop with the appraisal district. And uh, and help to, help the public understand this because it's very complicated. And uh, but it is all very, very independent, uh, another thing that I found interesting, uh, they do. Our appraisal district does the uh, residential and land, but they farm out or they contract out. The, the uh, commercial part of it and uh, that's, that's done by somebody else because they're not licensed, that's, it, that's a different ballgame. So um, I would just love to see us do a, a workshop on that and uh, and help spread the word, help people understand that. It, the, we did not have any influence on that, the county doesn't, the school district doesn't. And uh, as you also said, I'd like to reemphasize, if those appraised values get too far from the market value. Uh, our school districts are in danger of the possibility of losing funding, so, and that's all state mandated. It's, has nothing to do with us.
Yep, something I'd like to add or question, uh, can't really influence it, but can we not counter it by adopting the effective tax rate? Trying to balance this out as a city, that's something we can look into.
The city's job to set the city's tax rate and city council will set the city tax rate and that will be part of the budget process.
The effective tax rate is pretty much collecting what you did last year.
That's the.
That's the idea.
It gets, yeah, it gets more complicated, but that's the idea of it and, and the effective tax rate calculation is a mandated part of the budget process. So um, so yeah, we certainly will be looking at.
Influence it, but we can definitely react and try to help our taxpayers by doing that, I would encourage you to do that, cause I won't be here.
Well, and the last thing I wanna say, let people know that they can protest, the appraisal district, well. Maybe welcome is the wrong word, but they, they will, they will talk with you, they, please, tell your neighbors, go see them. Fill out that form, be sure you've got it in by the fifteenth of, of May and then they'll give you an appointment, appointment for June or July or August. Down the road, so uh, that, that's important and they're not, uh, they're not backing off of that, they're, they're willing to talk to you and listen to you. So, please do that and encourage others.
And so, I, I've got a couple of comments, so one, um, uh, nobody is questioning the integrity of Ms. Eichner. But, but to the public, um, we all know that the board doesn't set the rates or the values. We all know that the city isn't driving the, the, the valuations. But is it prudent for us to put a city councilperson on the Kirkad board? When we want the appearance as well as the actual body to be completely independent, I would suggest that we shouldn't. Um, but that's for a different time, the uh, the other thing that is. The the other thing that is misinformation that's been put out is, this says correctly, but people don't hear it the way it's written, "City property tax rate has been the same or lower for the last 10 years." That's a true statement, but it's also a true statement, is it not, that except for the last two years? The previous eight were actually tax increases that were collected, that that state-mandated language that we have to do when we adopt the tax rate, if you collect more money, you have to say it's a tax increase, because we're actually taking more money into the government via the property tax, are we not? I mean, isn't that why we say that?
I think it's important to distinguish the appraisal and the tax rates.
I'm not talking about appraisals, I'm talking about taxable revenue that comes in.
Right, and so I'm saying that we, our property tax rate has stayed the same, and then depending on whether your property tax appraisal went up or down, that would determine whether or not your property tax bill went up or down.
So what we're really saying when we do that distinction, and the reason the state makes us say what they make us say, is because the people out in the world know that all they care about is my check that I gave in for my property tax went up or went down. And when the check goes up, that's a tax increase, whether it's the tax rate or the valuation that caused it, all they care about is that. So when we try and dispel myths by saying, well, you got to understand, our tax rate stayed the same, I think that's us being lazy and not explaining to them what's really going on. It's not to say that it's bad that we've had a tax increase, it's just, let's not play around with the words, and let's just tell them, it was a tax increase, it was a small one, because in the last 10 years, again, two years ago, we went effective tax rate, so we were flat. And last year, we, or this year, we actually had a tax reduction, I think it was accidental, but it was a reduction. And so, but prior to that, we were, we were increasing it, and we'd show it, it'd be like 1%, 2%, it's less than 2% normally. Let's just say that to the people, just tell them, it was, it was, all it was was 2%. So this particular problem that we're looking at, we, I think part of, I think a workshop would show it, is what people need to understand is not that their house hasn't been valued appropriately for the past 10 years, because they don't care about that. All they care about is in one year, the valuation changed, and it was corrected, a 20-year lag was corrected in one year, that's a lot to ask for somebody. So we need to explain to them why we're doing that, and maybe consider not doing that. But if we're going to do that in the valuation side, we look at what Vincent brought up, which is, maybe the effective tax rate isn't what we should be looking at, but maybe what we should be looking at is something that's a stable approach to property tax revenue, similar to what we've been doing the past 10 years, which is, make sure, and this is why I asked you that question that I did yesterday, about what is the valuation change over, for the city, from last year to this year, so that we aren't raising our expense budget in this 10% range, it's always staying in that 1.5 or something like that. Because if we're increasing it a lot, we're losing touch with the people that are out there, and I get, nobody's questioning the truth or validity of the stuff, but we just got to understand what people really are paying attention to, and that's the money out of their pocket.
And to your point about, you know, people looking at how much am I paying in property tax, the other taxing entities that make up the total tax rate, they have been increasing their tax rates over the last 10 years.
Right.
The city hasn't. And so, you know, even if the city went down, you may see a tax bill going up, because one of the other taxing entities is raising their tax rate.
I get that.
So there's a lot of moving parts in there.
Right, but we, well, we, only thing we can control in this room is the city.
That's correct.
And so, I don't want to sit, I don't want to be lazy up here and say, well, the rest of the taxing entities are running over the cliff, so let's just follow them over it. So we can be proactive with this, we don't have to balance...
We just need to give a lot of education about what portion of their property tax bill is actually going to the city, because I think people just see, okay, I'm paying this $5,000 or something like that, but they don't look so much into how is it divided out between entities.
I would argue that we do that, as well as educate them on the fact that what we can do here, because we can control our budget, the city's budget. And to one last point, I know the thing buzzed, but we keep talking about this, but when we say, and this is again, you got to understand who we're talking to, that people understand this, the revenue streams for the city are property tax, sales tax, permits and fees. They don't care which one of those revenue streams pays the debt, or pays the expenses. All they know is, one of those, the composite pays for the debt or pays for the expenses. So when we keep talking about our debt being paid by property tax, it's all connected, sales tax is connected, water's connected, they're all revenue, let's just tell them that.
Oh, comment, quickly, maybe Judy, you know, workshop I think is very good, but I I actually think as a voice, as a city voice, it would be nice to represent our concern about these property, you know, assessments, as a voice, you know, as a city voice. Is that possible to do something where we, we just, you know, make an inquiry as to, you know, we've heard from all of our citizens, and myself included, I live in Comanche, and mine went up 44%, so I can tell you that we're affected by it, and we're going to march down to Kirk-Cad ourselves before May 15th and try to find out. But I just thought as a collective effort from the city, saying, okay, we've had our workshop, we have these questions, and maybe have a sit-down with them, to say, we realize we don't influence you, we have nothing to do, but we want you to understand, we're hearing from our citizens, and this is what they're saying, and we agree with them. So is there a way we could maybe do that?
I think we could find a way to do that, absolutely.
The, okay, if we did a workshop, and out of that came a joint statement of the council or something, I think, I think that's good. The, because, I mean, on my Mayor Facebook page today, I talked about this, and man, I've gotten a lot of responses of folks saying, I don't know what I'm going to do, given, you know, taxes I'm going to be paying, and just on and on, I mean, folks are hurting. They're hurting and they're mad, too. So I would say...
Can I make a suggestion? It's basically what she's just said, we had speakers get up and speak, and ask for certain things, we've had a workshop idea, and then something coming out of the workshop being maybe conveyed, if we will, to Kirk-Cad. If we consolidate what they asked, one was asking for a review of property tax raises, which is similar to a workshop, asking for public hearing on appraisal value increases is basically the same thing, and then asking for a resolution supportive state property tax, like, well, I don't know if we go that far, but basically that conversation could all be had at the workshop. So look at having a workshop with the possibility of a recommendation resolution or something coming out of it, and that consolidates everybody's asks.
Yes, and and I think we absolutely can do that. And and George, you said that something about, you know, so many people, we know, we know some of these things, our public doesn't know, they they don't understand how all of this comes about. And that's another thing that I think we need to help do, and and I think the appraisal district probably needs to also help educate all of these things.
It would be in their best interest.
Yes, yes.
It really would, that's true.
Right, it would be in ours not to pass the buck, right? So that's why we're doing that.
Well, exactly right.
And one, one quick thing about debt, too, as a CPA, I follow accounting principles that are set by accounting standards boards, and enterprise debt in the water fund paid by water and sewer revenue is very different than property tax-supported debt, so I I just, I respectfully disagree with what you're saying there.
Yeah, and all I was saying is I was giving understanding to you what the people feel, and what they noted.
It's a complicated subject, and I get that, it's, you know, it's something I have years of education on, and the average person on the street is not going to know the difference between those things.
We're trying.
Mr. Hoppe? Would you follow up with us on looking at a workshop on this topic?
Yes, sir, we will.
And, all right.
And I think the appraisal district will be open to that all, so.
Maybe there's a way we can solicit, once again, the input we heard tonight, in case we didn't get it all, or in case there's more, before we have our workshop, just some way to funnel the input, besides just what we heard tonight, I imagine there's more, anyway.
Okay, we'll come to the, I'm sorry, were you, were you...
Can I make one added thing to that? If there's a way to suggest that it moves quickly to getting to the workshop, simply because people are trying to decide on their, you know, their May 15 deadline and whatnot?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
Okay, okay, monthly community improvement project report?
Yes, sir, we'll just very quickly go through these, I wanted to give you an update. We have completed the Crack Seal Project, which we elaborated on pretty extensively in our street maintenance workshop with you here a couple of weeks ago. Slurry Seal Project, as you know, was let here at one of your recent meetings, and so that that is underway, we are, we have engaged in paving season, so roadways are warming up, and we are out there providing the street maintenance plan, which has been at least currently adopted before our re-review this summer. Parking garage maintenance repairs, you may have noticed, we've been doing quite a bit of striping interior to that, really cleaning up a lot of the the old paint that had been painted some years ago, and so really trying to make that operationally quite a bit better. Tennis center improvements, you may have seen a lot of construction fence going on up there, that facility is still partially in use, and they've been able to reallocate usage to some of the upper or most western of the courts, but that is actively going in there, we're hoping to wrap that project up hopefully by the fall timeframe, so we're going to move as quickly as we can, weather-dependent, of course, as Amy mentioned, it's been quite a wet year. River Trail Extension, we're about 50% through the design engineering phase, working through the preliminary alignment through that corridor, and of course, working very closely with our partner, Shriner University, on that effort. Legion Lift Station, you've probably seen quite a bit of work going on at Loop 534 and Highway 27, we are in the process of digging a big hole over there and and putting in about $8 million worth of infrastructure, so on track and moving that forward. And then we just commenced construction of the TTHM control facility out at the water treatment plant, so making great progress on that, we'll be bolting that system on over the course of the summer, and again, just enhancing, we'll have some of the highest quality water in the state of Texas when we get done with that project, so very excited to be getting that one started. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
You were talking about Loop 534 and 27, were you talking about the Legion Lift Station?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say, we were looking at the new middle school and the high school across there, in the city's property, that we're looking at doing housing, including some workforce housing, and then some other commercial things coming up on the loop. How much you say, 8 million, was it 8 million?
Yes, sir, approximately.
To to do a wastewater lift station out in that part of town, because of all the growth, and you've got to get ahead of that, and so it's not cheap.
And if you want to see some great heavy equipment, just take a look.
They use some big machines, no doubt about it.
Okay. Ask one question on the the clarifier rehab thing, are we, are we pulling water out of our ASR wells while that's being worked on, is that what we're doing?
As needed, we're primarily using our groundwater wells throughout the community in various places, but we can use ASR, we have engaged it at times. It's not solely ASR.
No, but do you know how much ASR came out so far? Like, how long are we...
I don't know off the top of my head how much ASR has come out, we did top over a billion gallons of ASR water here recently, so.
Can we get that at some point, and, you know, find out how much we pulled out in that?
Real quick, on the ASR wells, we had a fellow graduate from Tybee, went off to serve in the Army and the Corps of Engineers around the world, came back here, he was head of UGRA, and he had heard about these aquifer storage and recovery wells, where you can put treated water at a constant temperature until it's needed. And so they drilled one, Bernie Brunce died, by the way, last fall, but they drilled one, then they drilled another, we may do a third, but we were the first in Texas to have one, and the second in the nation. And recently, with the two ASR wells, we came to a total of a billion gallons of water in those wells.
Stored.
Yeah.
Billion gallons stored.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's great. Okay, any other items, other than the workshop for future agendas?
I just had one comment, kind of, that storm the other night, I was working late, and the striping in the parking lot, it kind of created a traffic jam, I don't know if it's too late or not to look at new striping, but it was a, it's quite a mess.
Oh, okay.
What parking lot?
All right.
Parking garage, the entrance to get in and out, people were coming out, and it was lined all the way to the second floor, so people trying to go into the bottom floor couldn't turn left, so it made Clay Street not very fun to be on.
Wow. Okay, I assume there is not a call for an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, so the next council meeting will be your last?
Yes, if that's, I wouldn't call it a council meeting, it would just be kind of showing up.
Showing up, okay, all right. So we can kind of make over you and compliment you and...
Thanks, sure.
All right, okay, 8:33, we are adjourned.